Call the meeting to order for tonight, Thursday, March 29th. And as we do start every meeting, we'll read out the mission statement. Public schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Roll call?
Jeff Chalmers.
Jeff Curry.
Paul Cochran.
Mark Flaherty.
Thomas Doyle.
Alright, public comments? None. Okay. We'll move on. Uh, correspondence, we also... Sorry? Doesn't say anything on here. I can't, I don't have my glasses. I said that! Um, God, I really can't see this. Okay, so, we'll actually move on. Alright, so let's do the budget first. Um, so that's the poll show, right?
Dazzle us.
Is this gonna work in here? Big screen?
So she's gonna dazzle us, not you.
With the PowerPoint. And bedazzle.
Well, you didn't open up the project hearing when you opened up the regular school.
Well, no, I was just looking. Oh, sorry, that was it. Uh, if you would open it up to the wrong ones, this is your perfect. Well, somebody did.
Yeah, gotta shoot it at the back thing? Those are extra things.
Cheaters? Does it work? I think I'll squint. Riveting television right now.
Change the channel. Do I have Wi-Fi?
Anything anyone wanna talk about?
It is?
There we go. Ah, okay. Ta-da!
So, for tonight, we're just gonna walk through the budget presentation and the recommendations the budget subcommittee put together, and then we will leave time for public comments on our budget. As far as budget process, we always start with considering what the district vision and the district mission are. The vision is a new thinking that we developed as a new strategic plan for 2018 to 2021. So our district vision is to teach, inspire, empower, and sustain. And Tom has just read the mission statement, but the mission statement really is about offering a safe, challenging learning environment that differentiates and meets the needs of our diverse students, inspires students to be lifelong learners and caring and active citizens of our ever-changing world. In addition to the mission and vision, we also looked at the strategic plan goals for 2018 through 2020. We have four key strategic plan goals. The first is to foster a safe, inclusive environment, supporting and nurturing the social and emotional health and well-being of our students, staff, and families. The second is about providing an engaging curriculum that incorporates personalized learning opportunities, fosters innovation, and empowers students to share ownership for their educational growth. The third is about professional learning and collaboration, and helping to make sure that we provide teachers with a professional development resources, they can provide, continue to provide a more educated education for all students. And the final goal is around developing a multi-year communication strategy so that we have the capacity to get timely and comprehensive information out to parents, and we have a way to collect information and feedback. I think it's important to take a look at sort of our long-term budget history. So, in order for the district to move from year to year and just carry forward our existing staff, absorb increases in expense items and costs generally takes between 2% and 3%. So, between 2011 and 2013, the district had significant cuts to programs stabbing expense lines. So, in 2011, there was a negative 3%, 0% in 2012, 1.5 in 2013. So those were years that the district absorbed significant cuts. From 14 to 18, you'll see we had about 4.7, 4.25. Those were years that the district worked on rebuilding and restoring positions and programs that had been eliminated. Our average increase is about 2.54%. At the same time, there were significant decreases to federal funds that were available to support the operating cost of the district, and there were also additional new mandates that we had to absorb costs for. So, since 2009, we've had almost a half million dollar reduction in federal and state grants. The state did eliminate the full-day kindergarten grant, that was about $35,000 for the district. And we also have several mandates. So there's required annual professional development, crisis prevention and intervention, suicide prevention, SCI shots of English immersion training. So there's a lot of required professional development that comes with costs. We've had increased reporting requirements for data from both the state and the federal government. We can even do transportation, that's transportation we're required to provide for students that are homeless. That cost varies annually depending on our population. And in addition, as everybody is aware, with the increase that we've seen in school line across the country, the district has committed quite a few resources over the last three years to security upgrades for both buildings, and that's been about $120,000 in the past three years. The impact of the decline in revenues between 2009 and 13, classroom teaching positions were eliminated, instructional support staff, the foreign language program was cut, health education was also cut, technology staff were reduced, there was a reduction in funds for curriculum and materials, and at that time, the district managed cost by adding fees for transportation and van, and also eliminated some lighter positions. Fortunately, the town's been very supportive the last few years and has really helped us start to move forward with those restorations. So, between 2014 and 18, we have partially restored the classroom positions that were eliminated. We have fully restored our instructional support staff. We have not moved forward with the foreign language program, and we've talked about that before, it's not just a financial issue, although there's a significant cost to restoring that, it'd be about $175,000 to break back the foreign language program. There is a lot of difficulty for districts that have those programs right now in terms of sustainability. Hiring certified qualified teachers is a critical shortage in Massachusetts, so it's hard to staff as well. The health education program is partially restored. We increased the frequency for our students that they have wellness, they have a twice-a-week now, and one quarter of the classes in a month are dedicated to health education, so two out of every eight courses. We partially restored the technology staff, we're still operating with a .5 technology director. We restored funding for curriculum materials. We were able to eliminate the transportation fee, although we still carry the fee for vans. And we have partially restored the library staff. We were fortunate a couple of years ago to be able to eliminate tuition, so we offer pre-universal kindergarten programming for all students now. Per pupil spending, you can see between 2011, 2014, we're significantly under the state average for per pupil spending. 2015 Norfolk got much closer, we're actually right on par with the state for the average per pupil cost, and that's dropped back down slightly in 16 and 17. Part of the reason that it's lower in 16 and 17 is over the last couple of years, we've increased our enrollment by over 60 students. So, the increase in student enrollment has had an impact on our per pupil spending. Looking at per pupil comparisons to other elementary districts, and again, these are elementary busy districts that don't have a high school program, and they're the comparison districts that the Department of Ed has selected for Norfolk. When you look at our per pupil spending, we're in the lower bottom third annually compared to those comparison districts, went way up in 15, 16, and again, back down in 16, 17 to the bottom four. We're with rent and plane bill in Berkeley overall. Even though we have the lower per pupil spending rates, I think the return on investment for the town is very strong. Our students continue to perform the top 9% on state and MAST tests. Our class size in Norfolk are average, and the lower than average teacher-to-student ratio, so with our instructional support staff, our teacher-to-student ratio is lower than average. We continue to have outstanding arts education programs in music, visual arts course, and we have an award-winning band that just won a gold again last weekend in the Michael competition. We do have this home health education twice a week. Also, our teaching staff, the majority of teachers in Norfolk have advanced degrees and more than 10 years teaching experience. We have a very low staff turnover, and we have outstanding facilities, resources. If you look at the state comparison on MCAS, if you're looking at the PLA scores, again, this is the percentage of students that are scoring in the proficient and advanced ranges, the Norfolk score is consistently significantly above the state average. 2015, 2016, you see Norfolk scores only. That is because during those years, the state allowed districts to either take the PARC assessment or the MCAS, so they didn't report state-level data. Again, in math, we continue consistently outperform the state by a pretty strong margin. And again, 15, 16, they didn't report state data, so they opted to take PARC. Cost savings in our fiscal 2019 budget, we've done a lot of work with really partnering creatively with the town. We are sharing the facilities directly position, and this year, we also have a flex position we're sharing about 8 to 10 hours a week with the HVAC position from the town. That saves us about $60,000 annually. We are also restructuring the facilities department this year. It is gonna be structured such that we have a shared assistant facilities manager, and we will also be sharing a custodial position with the town. We're gonna stagger the work hours with that custodial position so that it spans over the weekend, which will itself in reducing overtime costs. We're projecting about $15,000 to $20,000 of annual savings with that restructure. We continue to cost-share professional development with rent and plane bill development in our local specialized collateral, that's about $10,000 annually. And we're looking to expand and continue to support in district programming to meet the needs of students and social and emotional learning challenges, and to reduce potential added district costs. So, I'll get into the proposal a little bit later of what we're looking to add next year, but in our budget, with the additional positions we're looking to add, we will realize the savings next year only of $268,478. We continue to explore our opportunities to tuition students into specialized programs in part of districts. We've had a student tuitioned into Norfolk from Plankville for a number of years. We're looking to possibly send a student to rent and programming, and again, to reduce costs. And we continue to provide our health-based therapeutic services in-house, and that's about $15,000 annual savings. So, our proposed budget request for 2000, I should say 2019 is... Or right. And I can't check it out either. Alright. 12 AM, 3:19, 98, is an increase of 4.13%, and that really just allows the district to maintain level services. It allows us to meet our contractual obligations for salary increases, and there's a few new positions we're composing. One is a .5 speech and language pathologist, and this is really to provide intensive services to one of our highly specialized early childhood programs. We're looking to add a .5 therapeutic teacher to the Freeman Kennedy School to support the needs of the growing number of students we have with social, emotional, behavioral learning challenges. And we're also looking to add a .5 paraprofessional staff member to provide instruction to students with English language learning needs, and that's the largest growing population in Norfolk. In 2013, we didn't have any identified ELL students. We currently have 30 students, and we have 17 students that have indicated in kindergarten registration that there's a second language program at home. So that population is growing. There are strong guidelines from Department of Ed about how much English instruction students need based on their proficiency level, so we really need that staff to meet those recommendations and guidelines. Our recommended budget, we have one teacher retired, so we're projecting the savings about $37,000 from that. We are, in order to recognize the town's reduced revenues, we are going to make some reductions in staff. We are proposing a .3 clerical staff reduction from the Freeman Kennedy office, that's about an $8,400 savings. A .2 clerical staff reduction from central office, that's about $8,500. We will be reducing two paraprofessional staff members for savings of $40,000. Our supply line at each hall a day is down by $6,993. AK services and supplies is down a little bit less, $540. We're reducing 2,000 added supplies in the administration office. We're recommending reducing a professional development line by $12,500. We're recommending a $40,000 reduction from our curriculum adoption line, $8,500 from heating and fuel, and we're recommending reducing the $28,000 we have budgeted to re-commission HVAC systems at the H L a day. We're gonna eliminate that for next year's request. So the total recommended savings, 193, 616 for reductions. Budget additions, the cost of the future staff name changes and cost of living is $297,135. We budgeted 2% pull-up adjustment for all other staff at $96,131. The cost of the new speech position is $30,678. The therapeutic teacher, $31,522. We are recommending a .1 increase for our current occupational therapist, and that's again to meet the needs and demands of students' IP's, that's $9,000. And then the .5 ELL paraprofessional is $10,917. So in staffing budget additions, it's $475,512. On the expense side, we would like to add one day to the paraprofessional contract at a cost of $4,800. We are going to be implementing a new math program next year, and we want the paraprofessional staff to be highly engaged and able to participate in that professional development. Those are people that are supporting construction in the classrooms, and they really need the background information. We're recommending adding a sixth staff to our ed assistant salary schedule, and that's only for staff members that have been here 15 years or more. We've done comprehensive study. Our salary scale is very competitive at the lower ends, but it caps out earlier than other districts, then we want to be able to retain our veteran staff. Instructional services and supplies is up by $32,000. Special ed tuition's $96,000. Special ed transportation correspondingly is up $20,823. IQ software and licenses is up by $11,000. Nursing and health is up by $200, and that, if you really wonder, is for hand wipes in the cafeteria for adult use. Our transportation contract came in at $29,640 above this year, and then facilities maintenance is up by $3,900. So, the total cost of that is $206,780. The budget increase breakdown, 3% of our 4.13% increase is contractual. There's a .9%, .09% is enrollment-driven, and that really reflects the paraprofessional ELL position, and then 1.62% of that is increased costs in special education, and we have a .59% in net reductions. The balance is out. Class size projections for next year, it's important to note that our class sizes have been increasing. In order to manage the needs of the budget, we're trying to retain the same number of staff we have next year as we have this year, but our class sizes are slightly increasing. So, we're expecting class sizes of 18.5 in kindergarten, that enrollment's ongoing, so we're modeling that. 20.6 in first grade, 19 in second grade, 21.1 in third grade, 22.6 in fourth grade, 19.9 in fifth, and 23 students in class in sixth grade. Just to give you a comparison, again, against the same elementary districts that the Department of Ed provides for us for comparison, we used to be in the very bottom in terms of class size, with class average class sizes of 18. You can see that in 16, 17, that's gone up to 21, and we're closer to the middle of the pack. To make the community aware, we are also just long-term concerned about the impact of enrollment of all the new building happening in Norfolk, so we did commission Ed to do an independent enrollment study and enrollment projections for us. If the current proposed Chapter 42B projects go through, we are expecting an increase of about 250 students over the next five years. Again, the breakdown of our budget allocation, the majority of the elementary district budget goes to salaries, so the largest share, the high, is professional salaries, the red is therapist salaries, and then 14% is other salaries, which is kitchen staff, custodial maintenance, and facilities. We have about... 9% of our budget is for services, that's basically primarily your transportation contract. 4% is supplies, 1% is other expenses, that's generally fixed costs, so typically buyback and other contractual provisions, and then 2% is for to add additional tuition. In order to do this, we're concerned in the working town, there's several areas of need, and I guess that we've not included in this budget request. So, these are, yet it's not included. We would like to see an increase of .2 in our music and technology as we add additional classes. We've had to reduce the number of minutes and length of those special subject classes in order to meet the needs of all the classes. So, we'd like to see an increase in our music and technology. We really wanted a full-time paraprofessional for ELL, but we're only asking for a .5 in this request. We'd like to restore the paraprofessional staff we had to reduce in order to meet the budget demands, and we'd like to see the clerical staff positions restored. We also have to reduce the .2 team chair position, which you don't see show up in the budget, but this .2 team chair has been funded historically by a state grant. We had to fund, we're expecting reduction in the grant for next year, and we also had to pick up a paraprofessional salary in that ring. So, that reduction doesn't show up because it's funded by the shows. We would like to restructure the library program and have full-time librarians at those buildings. We've talked about restoring oral language, and we'd like to increase custodial summer help. We have a lot more building use throughout the entire summer now with the rec. department programs and specialized, special education programs. It leaves us a much smaller window of clean and has the space ready. Expense items, not included. We would like to upgrade the video surveillance systems. We have cameras in most schools, we want to update them and with them on a single platform. That's about a $16,000 cost, but it is not included in the request. We still would like to eliminate van fees, those are about $24,000 annually. We would like to increase the prombook equipment we have, we're doing a lot of work online, especially at the sixth grade, students are doing a lot of errand projects online, we'd like to increase that. And we do have, we have a very modest technology replacement line in our budget, which is just holding us, but because the Freeman Kennedy was all built at once and all the technology was purchased at the same time, we really need to long-term increase that line in order to keep up with the tech replacement and surveillance. That's the budget overview, so I can take, I'm gonna come back, but I can take any questions from over here. Questions, comments? Budget subcommittee?
I was just wondering if you could explain to people at home that might not understand the difference between the Freeman Kennedy office and the central office?
Sure. So, Freeman Kennedy, we have a 1.8 secretary's in there, we'll be reducing down to 1.5. The central office is the superintendent's office that has the business office, the HR department, and have a technology director. So we have a .2 clerical person that supports our business office, HR, and we're reducing that completely in the central.
Let's go back to the budget additions page. Future staff name changes, all of the staff. The items that are in black text, future language pathologist, therapeutic, special ed, occupational ELL, paraprofessional. You say that those are all driven by the increased population of students, or a change in the population of students?
It's both. One is the increase in enrollment, so we have more students that are being serviced by some of our special education programs. And the speech position and the increase in OT are primarily focused at the H L a day, and it also reflects the changing nature of the students we're serving. So we have students with much more intensive needs in our early childhood program that have significant services for speech and language. Some have facilitated communication, so it's the level of need and the increase in enrollment.
So that's roughly 25, 22% of the overall increase. 62% is the actual contractual increases. So the real additions we're making is negligible.
Yeah, it's minimal. And actually, too, on the class savings, if we don't add these positions, we would be at risk for having to send some students out of district to receive the level of service they need, and that would be a significant cost.
It's a pain more, much, much more expensive.
So, the position, that 278 that I'm projecting we're saving, deducts for the, deducts the adds. So it'd be more like 350 if I had deducted the cost of those new salaries.
078? No? It's, it's very good. I mean, I don't know, I think it's, it's not like you're asking for the moon, I think it's just the basics of what needs to be done. I think pulse point as far as the percentage is an important one, 'cause would you say, what was the mess, 60-some-odd percent was essentially built in?
62 is just contractual.
Right, and then you've got the remainder that would come with this stuff, and like you said, even with that, there'd be a cost added if you tried to move those figures around.
Right.
So, I mean, there's just, it is what it is. I mean, you really can't do much with it, so...
Conservative budget, I think.
I would say it's a very conservative budget, so...
Which, which is in alignment with how you opened it up, is it's a level services
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know if you laid out, there's any number of things we'd love to add in here we've been trying to add for years, but unfortunately, yet again, this isn't the year it's gonna happen sadly, but... Give it a shot again next year, I guess.
Once again, everyone on...
Yeah.
Say, once again, everyone on the budget subcommittee did a great job. It's my first year in this, six years I've been on the school committee, not being involved in the budget, so it's weird for me to see it, like, all this together for the first time now. But, great job, guys.
Thank you. It was kind of exciting, I usually am involved in this, so I was like, I don't know how this movie's gonna end. It's kinda fun. And sadly, it's how every movie seems to end with a bunch of time, but... I was hoping for a different ending you guys came up with, but no, nice job, everyone. Alright, so, since we do not have a public, so we would look to adjourn this movie, excuse me, movie, meeting, sorry, it just stuck in my mind, and then we'll immediately reconvene for our regularly scheduled meeting, and then we would promptly then vote on this proposed budget. Is that clear to everyone? Okay. So, we will adjourn the budget committee meeting for March 29th. Assuming no one needs a break, we're gonna mow right back at it. I am not gonna read the mission statement again. We've already now done it twice, so I think we're okay. Okay, so we will...
Did you find your glasses?
Uh, no, Pam did give me some glasses that was causing me head problems, so, you're not gonna use those, but thank you. It was very nice of you, appreciate that. Alright, so then we will call our regular meeting to order for tonight, March 29th. So we've already read the mission statement, we will do roll call again just for the sake of making it correct. So, roll call, please?
Jeff Chalmers.
Jeff Curry.
Paul Cochran.
Mark Flaherty.
Thomas Doyle.
Andrew Flaherty.
Okay. So, public comments, as we noted in our just concluded meeting, we do not have any. Correspondence, we also do not have any. So the first thing we will go to for this evening prior to the school budget will actually be the bus contract for next year. And you can see that open, or that exhibit there as far as what that is, the cost of it for the, it's a three-year contract standard as we've had for the last number of years.
So I think the highlights are, this year, though, one thing that was different was the four district business managers from the three elementary districts in KP worked together to create common specifications for the school budget. They had a preview bid meeting in February, and then the bid opening on March 2nd. In response to the invitation for bids, we only received one bid for services, which was from WT Homes Transportation Company in Norfolk. The bid results are listed below. It actually came in slightly less than we had expected. So the annual cost for 2018-19 is $553,800. 1920 is $566,400, and 2021 is $581,520. The one thing that you'll note in this is that the, the business managers and the bid specs left a performance bid in as an option for districts, so, because they didn't have consensus about whether they wanted to include it or not. So, Homes bid that, and the, if the committee can decide whether or not they want to waive the requirement for the performance bond, if they do not, if you do not want... If they do not, if you do not waive the performance bond, then the bus contract bid increases by twelve thousand. So you'd see the annual cost of the bid, and if you waive the bid, that price goes down to five forty-one eight. You see that in the first year.
Right.
So it goes down by twelve thousand.
And five fifty-four.
Per school year, for a total of thirty-six thousand over the three-year life of the contract. So our business manager's recommendation is that the school committee vote to award the three-year school bus transportation service contract to Holmes, and that the school committee chair be authorized by the committee to sign the contract on behalf of the Norfolk School Committee. And then you can take a second, secondary vote on whether you choose to waive or wanna require the performance bond.
All right. Well, hold on, let's get a motion, then we'll go into discussion of it.
I make a motion that we award the bus contract to Holmes.
Okay, so we'll start with that one, and then we'll revisit the performance bond issue, so. All right, so discussion, Paul? I believe you have some.
Yes, the twenty, the FY nineteen annual cost in dollars, how much more is that than FY eighteen cost?
It's in the budget presentation, I think it's like twenty-nine thousand. We had a higher placeholder, and then the bus bid came in lower, and the budget subcommittee adjusted the budget request accordingly. So I believe.
Some of the presentation you just did.
Yeah. I believe the, I think it's twenty-nine thousand, twenty-nine thousand six hundred and forty. It's under expense additions on page six.
So we initially put in forty, roughly?
That's what we thought, so we reduced it accordingly in, in the budget request.
Got it.
We were at four point two four, and now we came in at four point one three, as we made the request match the bid.
Any further discussion as far as?
Just add that one question.
That was it? Okay. All right, no further discussions, so then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so then, we need then a second motion as far as whether or not to go forward without the performance bond.
I make a motion that we waive the performance bond as normal.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay. Further discussion?
Are the other districts waiving it?
Yeah.
Prior recommendations have we made to waive or to keep?
Excuse me?
Prior years, recommendations have we made to waive or keep?
Always waived.
We've always waived it.
I think the last time this came up for review, we had, the first time I think we ever really had a lengthy review of it, because it had just been sort of a performer thing. It was just always just waived, and we actually looked into it a little further last time, three years ago.
We did last time request three years of financials from Holmes.
Right.
Yeah, I remember having the meeting with Mr. Holmes.
Correct.
That was.
I don't recall it costing as much as twelve thousand last time, or am I off?
It, I think that does stand out. I think that's about what it was.
I think it's a little higher than it was in the past, but it wasn't broken out before. It was part of the.
Right. Yeah, I think it was just a totality of the contract reflected it, but I think it was fairly costly.
Yeah.
I don't know if it was necessarily twelve thousand, but off memory, I think it was like nine to ten or something like that.
Yeah, it was nine to twelve per.
So.
So the number that's built into the budget is the five forty-one, or the five fifty-three?
The, the, the number that we've built into the budget, it reflects not waiving the performance bond.
So we have an additional.
So if you vote to waive it, there'll be an additional twelve thousand savings, so then when we vote the budget, you may consider reducing our budget request by twelve thousand because you waived the bond. We just, we didn't have the vote yet, so we had to keep it in.
Got it.
Okay. And just recollection, keeping the performance bond in protects us in what way?
If the business went bankrupt or they weren't able to fulfill the services of the contract, and we had to bid that out to or hire another vendor to complete their contract, we would be insured for that.
Insurance.
Yep. No, just wanna make it known where people don't know what it is.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. All right, so then, we'll move on to, so we'll need a motion for accepting the school budget. So I guess for the purpose of this, maybe we should just accept the amount as proposed, and then the twelve thousand, or?
Then a committee member could make a motion to reduce the budget request by the twelve thousand.
Separately do that.
Okay.
All right. I make a motion that we approve the school budget as presented.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, further discussion? Already kinda talked about that, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and then do we have a motion as to Ingrid's idea, if we wanted to then put a motion forward as far as reducing that just approved amount by the twelve thousand dollar savings?
The one thing that I would say in terms of context to that is that the town still has a significant shortfall in closing their budget. Before we go to the advisory board, I believe the last I heard was they're still three hundred thousand short, and I believe they're going to be asking us to reduce our, they may ask us to reduce our budget further. So if the committee wants to reduce by twelve thousand before we go to advisory board, it might help the town close that gap. If not, we may be pushed to do it regardless, because then there is a significant shortfall.
I guess we'll do it now.
Do you foresee anything that we could later, that we might later need to transfer this twelve thousand to, to help us out later on, should?
Well, there's certainly lots of things that have been reduced in our budget. The committee could, you know, vote the number, and we could look to, you know, at some of the things that were cut, the positions that have been cut.
So why don't we do it this way? How about if I make a motion that we look into?
I can barely hear you, and I'm sitting next to you.
How about, I make a motion that, as a committee, we look into what other things we might be able to do with that twelve thousand dollar savings, as well as the option of reducing it from our budget, should that option be acceptable to the committee?
I don't think we can plan for the twelve thousand one way or the other. It sounds like we're gonna be told to have some kind of reduction to some degree.
I think that we're gonna have to, I mean, in the past, the committee's taken a position that we've worked very collaboratively with the town to try to go into town meeting with a balanced budget. And there's a three hundred thousand shortfall, and all departments will be asked to try to help close that gap. So if we have the capacity to go in with a lower number, I think it shows good faith, and the town has really supported us as best we can. I think if we don't, we're gonna be asked to cut regardless.
Right.
So, you know, I would suggest that we, we reduce the request by the twelve thousand and try to go in with a lower number.
So I'll make a motion then.
Yeah, let's put the motion forward, and then we can discuss it further.
I make a motion to amend the proposed FY nineteen budget by the amount discussed with respect to the performance bond and bus contract.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on that?
I, I just look at things, like the video surveillance upgrade of sixteen thousand. If we could at least start that with the twelve thousand, and we can take it to the town and say, look, the video surveillance is security.
Mark, I can't hear you.
I can, we can take the, my thoughts are with like the.
Into the mic, so everyone can hear.
Sixteen thousand, uh, the twelve thousand dollar savings. The video surveillance upgrades that we'd like but weren't in the budget already is estimated at about sixteen thousand. The twelve thousand isn't enough to fully fund that, but we could at least partially fund it or start the video upgrades with that twelve thousand and go to the town and say, look, yes, we're saving the money here, but we're gonna use it here for video surveillance, which is a security thing, to make sure that we improve our security at the school.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to table this discussion for, for the next meeting.
We, we have to present a request.
We got a motion.
Yes, but the motion's already been accepted. This is for the discussion outside. So discussion, he's already made a motion, motion's already been accepted. My point is on his point, to have that, his discussion tabled.
The discussion about security.
To table it. Table it to next meeting.
To the point, I, I, time-wise, I don't think we have enough. I think we're gonna have to move forward with something regardless, so even if, let's just say, for example, the town wasn't asking us to potentially reduce something, which seems very likely, we couldn't even get that far down, like using your example, the sixteen thousand, but by the time you put that out the bid and everything else associated with it, it just wouldn't happen timing-wise, so.
And I don't think that the video surveillance cameras would be our top priority. I mean, we have other staffing positions that we had to cut, that we would be looking to restore first. And again, if I thought that we could move forward and successfully move forward with a budget of four and a quarter, that would be one thing, but I, I know that, I know that the town is pushing all departments to, to come in with a lower request, so.
Yeah, no, I understand. I'm just trying to put out some ideas, you know, I know there's lots of other stuff. That was just an example.
No, it'd be nice, but.
Video surveillance is important, but it's not like we don't have video surveillance. It's a matter of upgrades, so it's, you know, I think it's the right thing to do, is to go forward with the best we can for the town.
Yeah, now, that also could pay some dividends down the road in terms of layout, so. All right, any further discussion then on that? Okay, so then, all in favor then of the budget with the twelve thousand dollar reduction?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. All right, so we'll move on to Ingrid's portion of the evening.
Again.
Yeah. The first thing I have for you is quarterly bullying report. There were five discipline issues, reports regarding bullying at the HLL of day this quarter. All the reports were investigated by bullying administrators. Each of the incidents was determined to reflect more inappropriate behavior and conflicts between students, but did not meet the criteria, the legal criteria for bullying. And so appropriate support, disciplinary measures were taken, and plans were put in support, to place to support students. At the Freeman Kennedy, there were six discipline issues, reports regarding bullying. Again, by policy, they're always fully investigated. There were two instances that were determined to constitute bullying, and immediate disciplinary action was taken, and plans put in place to prevent future recurrences. Any questions?
Nope.
The next thing I have for you is, and some of these things were tabled from the meeting that we had to curtail in February to attend the other budget hearing, so this was scheduled for February, but it's the annual district baselines and benchmarks report. And I'll highlight some of the things that are included in this, and this will be something that I'll share with the advisory board as well. The beginning just shows changes in demographics. As I mentioned during the budget presentation, our largest growing population of students is the ELL population, which has increased by seventeen students this year alone. So you'll, you'll see that reflected in the demographic data. Class size data was also included in the budget presentation. We were at the lower end of our comparison districts. We're now closer to the middle with an average class size of twenty-one. Teacher education and experience, eighty-five point four percent of our teachers have advanced degrees, and fifty-three percent of our teachers have been teaching for over ten years. In terms of retention, we have a very strong teacher retention rate. It's currently eighty-one point eight percent of our teachers stay with us, so that's high compared to the state. There were four teachers last year that didn't continue with Norfolk. Three were, departures were due to families relocating and one was retired. So we don't tend to lose teachers to other districts. Student attendance remains strong. Our attendance rate was ninety-six point five percent for two thousand sixteen seventeen. We're above the state average for that. We are below the state average as far as student discipline. You can see the three years' worth of data. Last year, we had a total of three students that were in school over the course of the year. No out-of-school suspensions. Technology, we've been really working on increasing our technology. Over the last two years, we've gone from an average of two point three students per computer to one point six. The state has held at three, so we've made some nice progress there. Budget comparisons, again, that's the per pupil cost data that I shared during the budget presentation, but we're still in the bottom quartile for our comparison districts as far as per pupil spending. Other data that I've included in this, I gave you some comparison MCAS data results. And again, generally, we look at the percentage of our students that are scoring position advanced. So on the grade five science test, you'll see, and I gave you three years' worth of data again, Norfolk's been in the top of the comparison districts for two thousand fourteen, fifteen, and fifteen sixteen. Closer to the middle, lower end of the pack for two thousand sixteen seventeen. You will note, if you look at the scores overall, all of the districts saw a decline in scores in that test, so the science tests and all of the MCAS tests, it's a different test every year, so when you see general decreases, it indicates it was probably a more challenging test. ELA and math data, again, you'll see, one sec, we were in the upper end, at the very top, in fifteen sixteen for performance on the ELA test results. In two thousand sixteen seventeen, Norfolk saw a drop in the ELA. What I would suggest with that was that was the first year our students took the test online, and there is a written component in our kids. That was a new experience, whereas many of the districts piloted PARC, and so the students had several years' experience with online testing. So it's really hard to evaluate whether that's a curriculum reflection or, or more the format of the testing. I would say because our district data on, which we'll get to in a minute, DRA reading scores and writing has stayed strong, that this probably more reflects kids' experience with the first time writing essays online during a testing window.
Do you know how long it would take? Do you think it would kinda go back to its natural level?
I expect that we'll see that, yeah, I think we'll see that come up every year. Again, it was the first time that they'd ever done it, and so we've learned how to better prepare them for that experience, too, and incorporate more of that into their regular instruction. So I think we'll see a nice, nice increase.
Okay.
The math test, they did take online as well, but there's less involved, there's less writing in the math test, so Norfolk has been at the top of the pack for, for the math all three years. You will see that some of the districts have NR as their rating. If they took PARC, they did not report district scores. So NR means not reported. We didn't have that data for comparison. On the district measures of academic achievement, we look at the DRA, which is the developmental reading assessment. Our scores remain strong on that. From two thousand fourteen fifteen to the last testing year, there's gains across all grade levels. Two thousand fifteen sixteen, there's, there's a couple that are pretty close, that went from ninety-five percent to ninety-four, but it's above the baseline data from fourteen fifteen. So we see nice trends in terms of student gains. We'll be in our third year next year of implementing the new reading program, so we wanna see those, we expect to start to see those gains rolling up through the grades. End of year writing benchmark, we are just implementing a brand-new writing program this year, releasing caucus units of study. It's an area that we have identified district-wide that we wanted to increase and strengthen our curriculum, so we've seen the long, the open response answers have been a challenge for our students on the MCAS. So we, we see scores in the writing that are around eighty percent for most grade levels, ninety percent for grade two, ninety-three percent by grade six, meeting the benchmark, but there's room for growth in those scores, and we have a brand-new writing program this year, so we're, we'll look to see gains with next year's evaluation data. End of year math benchmarks continue to remain strong across the grade levels, and then you'll see, we also track students fluency, math fluency, addition, subtraction, multiplication. These scores have gone up and down a little bit, but overall, they're, they're pretty strong. It's interesting, and, and we'll look at it, there's, the third graders had a decline in addition fact fluency from last year, but they're focused, they focus on multiplication and division, and they, we're looking at how to spiral that to make sure that they're retaining their other, their other math facts.
Especially grade four, going fifty-two to seventy-five over the course of two years?
Yep. So we've seen some, you know, overall nice, nice gains. We do have a math fluency program, a reflex math that your kids are probably familiar with, so this data has been collected since we've implemented that, and we've seen steady gains in the, in the overall fact fluency. Any questions on the benchmark baseline data? I do generally provide this as a courtesy just to the advisory board when we bring our budget forward, so, and it is available online on our website, too. Another informational item, grade report cards. So this year, we piloted the new report cards. I brought them to the committee back in the fall, and we've rolled out report cards for kindergarten through grade three. Next year, we're gonna be rolling out new report cards for grades three to six, so we'll have all brand-new report cards across the district. We have been using standard-based report cards. Originally, our plan was to develop a hybrid report card for grade six, where students would get an overall grade, and then they would get detailed grades on the standards. As we worked through the process, we don't think that's the best way to move forward. Doing a numerical grade and an average grade is completely different practice than doing standard-based grading, where you're looking at proficiency on individual standards over time. And when we looked at that, it's really, it would be really challenging for the sixth grade teachers to double grade every assignment using two different metrics. every assignment using two different metrics. The other two elementary districts, Plainville has gone with all standard-based grades K to six. Rantham was originally considering a hybrid in grade six, but they actually go all standard-based too. So we're all feeding King Philip. And so for consistency purposes, as well as we think it's the best assessment method, we're recommending going with the standard, a fully standard-based report card. The only concern that we had heard from parents about that was would a standard-based report card disadvantage students in the private school process? So in order to investigate that, I did talk to the director of admissions of all the private schools that we have sent kids to, and they, they didn't really have concerns about that. I talked to Kevin Lefteris at Zavarian. He said they receive applications for over 122 different schools and they all have a different grading metric. They said they have to have a way of comparing students so they rely often on the entrance exam as a, as a more standardized comparison tool. And they, they have ways of accounting for standard-based grading and, and they rely on teacher recommendation as well. So he didn't feel it would influence applications at all. I, I got basically the same feedback from Molly Pauls at Ursuline in St. Sebastian's. He said private schools will find a way to make sense of the report card. They also get report cards from a, a lot of different systems. He said that when, when they have difficulty, they tend to rely more heavily on their entrance exam and teacher recommendations. So we don't feel that, that this would significantly disadvantage any kids and we feel like it's a better grading practice. So we'll be moving forward with a standard-based report card. And I will explain that we'll do what we did this year. I'll have a parent night to go over the new report card. We also sent, I sent out a video with explaining the report card to parents. So we'll do, plan to do that in the fall of next year. Questions on that? Okay. Next one's a minor change. When we proposed the draft school calendar, there was an, accidentally, we left off one of our contractual early release professional development days. So this is a revised calendar with that date added back in. It would be October 24th, early release for professional development. So it would be the same number of days as we had last year. We just left it off in the last vote.
All right, so do we have a...
Previously, it was just a full day.
No, we, when we developed the calendar, we should have had four half-day early releases and we only scheduled three.
Right.
It would have been a full day. Yes, I'm sorry.
So there's no, just...
No change other than this?
For the record, it's not a change in any dates, beginning or ending.
No.
Buses will go home earlier.
It would just be an early release.
All right, so do we have a motion to accept the change to the 18-19 school calendar?
I make a motion that we accept the revised school calendar.
Okay, do we have a second? Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
All right, and the last thing that I have is school choice. So it's the policy of our school is to admit non-resident students under the terms and conditions of the inner, inner district school choice law. But the committee has the right to vote to withdraw from the provisions of that law annually and they have to do it prior to June 1st. Historically, we voted not to participate in school choice. We prefer to maintain lower class sizes, have a favorable student-teacher ratio, and there's always concern with the cost because what you receive, it often costs more to educate students than you receive in reimbursement. So my recommendation would be that we vote to withdraw from school choice. But I'm putting that to the committee for more.
All right, so do we have a motion to opt out of school choice for the next school year?
I make a motion that we opt out of school choice for next school year.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right.
That's, that's it, correct?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, moving on to King Philip.
King Philip had a meeting on March 19th, of which two items were of concern for discussion, student walkout summation relative to a discussion Dr. Mobley had, which I believe was very successful in the events that day. The other item that had to do with the budget and a specific memo from Larry Azza, Director of Finance and Operations. As shared in previous discussions on the FY-2019 budget, two items were still uncertain. Health insurance and transportation, in the past few weeks, we received an initial renewal proposal from Harvard Pilgrim reflecting an increase of 4.56% over the current rates. After continued negotiations with Harvard Pilgrim, the proposed FY-2019 increase has been reduced to only 2.56 over the current rates. Compared to the 10% estimate originally included, this is a total reduction of 298,000, 099 to the budget. Additionally, the transportation contract bid was received and the FY-2019 increase is only 4.33 as compared to the 10% estimate originally included, resulting in a reduction of 47,250. Lastly, we received notice of two teacher retirements with an additional savings of 44,784 to the budget. Below is the summary as follows. The revised 2019 budget went from 35,396,982 to a revised 35,023,194 for a variance of 373,788. And a percentage variance difference between FYI 2018 and 19 of 4.99 original to a revised of 3.81 for a variance reduction of 1.28, which changed the FY, FY 2019 town assessments of Norfolk of 8.9 million to 8.7 million for a variance of 13549 of a percentage variance, 8.8 the original to a revised of 7.21 for a difference of 1.59. At the time, we recommended the committee adopt FYI 2019 total budget, including debt service of 35,023,194 with the following member town assessments: Norfolk, 9,527,606, Plainville, 6,516,640, and Rantham, 10,510,673 with enrollments as of 10/1/17, Norfolk, 731, Plainville, 551, Rantham, 811, and Norfolk being 34.93% of their total enrollment.
Sorry, Jeff, can you do the more, not the whole thing. What was the final breakdown per town there? You said the actual dollar amount per town. I know, I'm sorry.
Town assessments?
Yeah, the, the last thing you said was a...
Norfolk with original was 8,000, 8,918,074.
Yep.
Revised to 8,787,525 for a difference of 130,549.
Okay.
And that does...
You need the other towns?
The debt service.
Correct. Do you need the other towns as well?
No, there were, I just wanted...
I remember it was the debt service.
So the nine whatever it is for Norfolk was a debt service number, correct?
If you don't have it, I'd be happy to forward any of the information.
But that debt service doesn't change.
Yeah, debt service is static number. That, that's not moving. So it's just the other things. Okay, wow, that's fairly good news.
Yes.
Okay. I was not saying, I know you're gonna top that one, so. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, policy?
Policy, we only have one item on the agenda. It's a first reading for staff ethics and conflicts of interest. Basically, we're just making it in compliance with the, the law. Laws change, so do our policies.
Is this what the statutory change in 2016?
Yeah, with the mandatory ethics training.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Just the first reading on that, correct?
Yep.
Okay. So that's it for that. All right, so, yeah, you got the other ones? So we've got, yeah, four. Yes, all right, so we've got...
Oh, look, hold on.
Let's write these up separately.
There's another one that's not listed on here, but it's in here. Oh, never mind. No, I'm an idiot. I didn't read through this properly. There's incidental changes.
All right, so we have four votes on incidental changes.
Yes.
So I guess we'll do...
So the first one is exclusion and exemption from school attendance.
We just clarified the language on there. It was a little bit confusing. It says failure to meet the requirements of age by a student who has reached the age of six years at the time of the beginning of the school year. It was a little wordy and confusing. They have to be six by September 1st. So we just put it in that way.
Since these are all incidental changes, I mean, obviously, we'll review the one by one. Can we do one motion for all the incidental changes and then if there's one discussion point, we can pull it out separately? If one of these ends up being, just for the sake of...
Yeah.
Okay, so do we, well, no, just wanna make sure. All right, so do we have a motion to accept, or to, yeah, to accept the four incidental changes for the policies?
Motion is presented.
Okay. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, and then just to clarify, that is for policy JHD, KDB, DGE, JE, and JQ. So if you wanted to, I guess, maybe summarize them each marks, that way we know.
And then we have, the next one is public right to know. It's just an incidental change where we're adding in all commonly available public records, document, uh, record documents of the school district shall be posted on the district's website, which we, we have to do by law. The length of time such records shall remain posted on the district's website shall be in accordance with the municipal records retention manual. So basically, it's by law, we have to post it on there and it'll stay on there as long as needed by law.
Okay.
And then the bidding requirement law has changed. So it went from 25,000 to $50,000. And then we've added in, so we changed to 50,000 everywhere that it was saying 25,000. And then we added in, "All purchases valued between 10,000 and 50,000 shall require the procurement officer to attempt to secure three quotes for all materials, equipment or services. All purchases valued at less than $10,000 shall be required to use, the use of sound business practice to secure the, the best quality at the best price." And then the only other change was where we changed, "They will be mailed to all merchants too. They will be distributed to all merchants."
Got it.
Because we distribute a lot of that by...
Yeah, B-mail or something, okay. That makes sense.
And then the last one is the students' cost and fees. Again, we just changed a little bit of the wording. It says, "The district will implement a sliding fee scale based on a state income and eligibility formula to determine students and families' qualifications for free or reduced fees, tuition, and charges. Students who are intigent and are exempt from paying fees." And then...
Basically, with that, what we did, we used to use the sliding fee scale that Department of Ed published for kindergarten advance, but they, now they don't have that grant, so they're not updating it. So we're using the same model and the same formula and adjusting it. It's based on the state's reported average mean income and a percentage of that. So we're using the same formula. We're just gonna produce it annually based on the state data.
And then we also listed that we're gonna, that it's gonna be in the family handbook as well, this information.
And we removed the references to bus transportation and...
Yeah.
Take kindergarten to...
Yes, so not relevant anymore. Does that make sense?
Right.
Okay. Any further discussion on any of these four incremental changes? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. All right, so we went through the budgets. We have a couple of school partner renewals. We won Norfolk Recreation.
I make a motion that we approve the Norfolk Recreation School Partner Renewal.
Second on that?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then next one would be on the King Philip Music Association, renew that school partnership.
I make a motion that we approve the King Philip, uh, School Partner Renewal. King Philip Music Association School Partner Renewal.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so then, we just gotta look through the minutes, if we can remember our last meeting, which was forever and a day ago. Believe it or not, it was only February 13th. It just seems a lot longer ago than that. So we need a motion to accept the minutes from the February 13th meeting.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussions? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Not.
And then, yes. And next thing, next meeting is just pick of the date. We're looking at April 10th, so not that far away. Lot of quality time next couple of weeks.
I have a conflict, but I'll try and resolve it.
That's all we can ask, Paul. That's all we can ask.
Did well there.
Yeah, I didn't, it was only so far. I wanted to start pulling at that thread, so. All right, is it April 10th work for the remainder of...
Works for me.
Yes.
Are we gonna have a public presentation that day?
We have a couple things, a couple groups. Yes, the math curriculum committee will be presenting their recommendations for new programs.
I meant to the town.
Budget.
That's April 4th. The advisory committee is April 4th.
Hold on, I'm just getting this in my calendar. Okay. All right, so you got that straight, Paul? Very good there. All right, um, all right, nothing further. We are adjourned. Second time, thanks.